Okay, so. So today. Uh, this afternoon, we were speaking about the uh. The last three and a half years. Which is uh. This period here, and we talked about all the different things that would take place. And that includes the fifth trumpet. Remember, there are seven trumpets. That carry the judgment of God. And the. There was a question. About the fifth and the sixth trumpets. Whether that would uh harm the Christians that are left behind. And as far as I understand, it won't because. Um. For the fifth one in chapter nine. Remember, the fifth trumpet is when the swarm of locusts. Are released over the whole earth. It says here in verse four. That they were commanded not to harm the grass of the earth or any green thing or any tree. But only those men who do not have the seal of God on their foreheads. And um. The seal of God we saw in chapter seven, the Israelites, the the hundred and forty-four thousand people of Israel, they received the seal of God. Right? And then, of course, we Ephesians, chapter one says, we are sealed with the Holy Spirit. So we should not be harmed by that. And then the sixth trumpet where the uh two hundred million horsemen go to kill one third of mankind. Um, I I don't believe that this affects us either. Because this is a judgment on the world, the people of the world. But the judgment, but what will be uh harming the Christians is the beast. The beast and his persecution against the Christians, okay? So um. You know, they. One of the things that I I we were just briefly mentioning in chapter nine of. Of Revelation. It says here in verse twenty, even with so much catastrophe going on. You know, many billions of people dying. And being tortured and killed and so many things like that, natural disasters or supernatural disasters. In verse twenty, it says, but the rest of mankind who were not killed by these plagues. Did not repent of the works of their hands. So that shows us that the plagues were directed towards the nonbelievers because those people would not repent. They did not repent of the works of their hands, that they should not worship demons. In this part, I have to ask you. Have you ever met somebody? Who worshiped demons before? I've never seen somebody worship a demon. But apparently, the people of the world, they worship demons. Have you ever seen a demon before? No. Because the demons don't today, they don't appear. Like maybe what you've seen in movies or pictures or things like that. You know, today. Many things in this world. Almost, I would say just about everything. That is in the world today. You know, I'm talking about things like the music industry, the Hollywood, the movie industry, sports and. And political leaders, governments, right? All sorts of commerce and finance. Fashion, yeah, so many things. How do you think that some of these people who have no talent become so rich and famous? Some of them, they they actually have sold their soul to the devil. It's not, it's uh, you may say it's just an expression, but I believe many of these people. Especially in Hollywood and music. They actually made a deal with Satan. That if I become, if you help me to become rich and famous. I will give you my soul, and they serve Satan, many of them. And so in this age right now, many of the, even some of the music artists, they're become very blatant with their worship of Satan. Yeah, some even even some actors have openly thanked Satan. You know, some of them, like in the last Grammy Awards, there was a performer. Sam Smith, he's very famous, right? He made this uh music performance where he was dressed up like a devil and all these red demons were kind of like. Worshipping him and the soul, everything was in red light, and you know the name of the song was? It was unholy. The song's name was unholy and he's pretending to be a devil. They're doing this on TV, right? This is the Grammy Awards, the 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 big awards that they give to music, right? Every year. And this is becoming more and more open. And you can see how even in the educational system, they're trying to destroy the family, they're trying to go against God, they're. Trying to confuse young people, whether you're male or female or neither. You know, they're trying to confuse people and bringing so much corruption. And defilement, they're everything, you know, I read somewhere, some somebody said that if you're a. If you register for TikTok and you put in your age as thirteen. Or a young person, immediately you are bombarded with things like uh mental health and suicide and self-harm and crazy things like that, they, you know, gender stuff. They just bombard you with those types of things on on your phone. You know, so they're targeting a lot of young people. Why do you think it's like that? Why, why isn't that so many things are that are righteous in God's eyes have become unrighteous? And the things that are wrong are becoming right? Who do you think is behind all that? It's all Satan. So Satan is behind so many things to try to attract people. To take up our, to defile us. You know, we think they're just watching a, I'm not saying you can't watch anything, but I'm just saying. When you watch, you have to be careful, there are so many things that that are there to sear your conscience. They desensitize you, they're there to defile you, they mess with your mind. So a lot of these things, that's why it says here, they did not repent of their worship of demons. Because actually, many people worship demons and don't even realize it. They're following demons. Really, behind a lot of these famous people. It is, it is the work of Satan, it's demonic, and I wouldn't be surprised if many of them are demon-possessed. Have you ever seen some of the? You know um. Some of the people who are protesting for to support transgenderism, have you seen how violent some of those people are? They get very violent and angry, and if you say that you're you don't support these things, they come at you and they wanna, they wanna beat you up, they're so violent. It's so so much anger and hatred. You know, it's like they're possessed, some of them. You know, they're worshiping demons, they don't even realize it. So demons do not appear today as a, you know, some scary uh person. They look, they look like normal people. But what they do is is uh satanic and really evil. You know, they have their idols of gold, silver, brass, stone and wood, which neither see here nor walk, we're not talking about. Physical idols. You know, but but many of the things that that we touch, many things that that draw us. We have to be very careful. The behind all these things. Behind the many things is the power of Satan. You know, and that's why all, it's very dangerous. Why the Lord has to judge it, and if we get too sucked into it, too tied up into it. It's very hard to get out, and we will be hurt by the judgment as well. So. You know, um, yeah, so there's all that, right? The beast, the beast will come. In chapter thirteen, we see, and he will force the whole world to worship his image, and you can't buy yourself unless you get his mark. And uh, there was um, somebody was saying today at our dinner table, right? Some people said that uh. They believe that that Prince Charles, or not Prince Charles, that means King Charles the Third is the Antichrist. So that's the theory, you know? Well, I can tell you that that is definitely wrong, he is definitely not the Antichrist. Uh, because the person who is the Antichrist will be involved in the signing of the peace treaty in Daniel, chapter nine. So he must be involved in that somehow. So he is a world leader who has the authority to do that. Okay, Charles is just a figurehead, he's a leader on paper only, he has no power. And plus, he's not involved in any peace treaties. And uh, you know, and also. In chapter uh thirteen, you see that he had a deadly wound. He was killed. Is anybody trying to kill Prince Charles? Nobody cares, nobody's trying to kill him, right? But the most likely person right now would probably be Trump. Because people do wanna kill him, they wish he was dead, and he was involved in the uh uh the signing of the Abraham Court, but not him. But potentially his body. So um, we're not gonna get into the details of that uh, you know.
But if he wins the election, there's possibility.
Oh, if he wins it, yeah, then it's very, it becomes a lot more likely, but he doesn't even have to win it, even running for election. People will try to stop him from winning so much, they even may try to kill him. You know, that's how, that's why they keep trying to take him to court and convict him, because they're trying so hard to stop him. Eventually, they'll realize none of those things can stop him except. You know. It's funny, because uh in the the Saints in the US, they dare not say that because they're. Over there, the FBI might show up at the door. But anyways, um, yeah, so tonight, we wanna look at the period after. At the end of the uh. The last three and a half years. So what happens is the seventh trumpet, so remember, there were six trumpets. Five and six are during the last three and a half years, and then now we have the seventh trumpet. And the seventh trumpet, there are many things involved here, it's the final trumpet. And actually, if you um go to chapter eleven. You see, we were just at uh, we finished with chapter fifteen, and now we're going back to chapter eleven, so revelation is not in chronological order. So back to chapter eleven, we can see what happened with the seventh trumpet, seventh trumpet. So on verse fifteen. It says, then the seventh angel sounded. And there were loud voices in heaven saying, the kingdoms of this world have become the kingdoms of our Lord and of his Christ, and he shall reign forever and ever. So finally, all the kingdoms, the governments of this world, they will be replaced with the kingdom of Christ. So finally, the kingdom of Christ is about to come. He will reign forever and ever. And the twenty-four elders who sat before God on their thrones fell on their faces and worshiped God, saying. We give you thanks, oh Lord God Almighty, the one who is and who was and who is to come, because you have taken your great power and reigned. See, now the whole world has seen the power of the Lord. Today, many people, they say, there's no God, I don't believe in God, but at that time, they will see, they will see that there is a God. Right? The nations were angry, and your wrath has come. So the nations, not only do they not repent, but they're angry, they wanna fight back. That shows you, they really don't respect God as God, they think they can defeat God, right? And the time of the dead, so at the seventh trumpet. Also, the time of the dead that they should be judged. So here we see the resurrection. The seventh trumpet is the time that the dead in Christ will rise again. And that's in first Corinthians, chapter fifteen, verse thirty-two, where we read. This familiar verse. This second Corinthians, uh first Corinthians uh. Fifteen. Verse forty-two. Uh, is it forty, fifty-two, fifty-two? It says, in a moment, in the twinkling of an eye, at the last trumpet. So Paul knew about the the seven trumpets. So at the last trumpet. For the trumpet will sound, and the dead will be raised incorruptible, and we shall be changed. So at that time. Your Christian. Family, friends, whoever it is that have died already, they will, they will rise from the ground somehow. They will resurrect, and they will be taken to the air. Okay, so we'll continue, we'll talk about that in a moment. And then back to Revelation eleven eighteen, okay? It says, the time of the dead that they should be judged. And that you should reward your servants, the prophets and the saints. So this is the time, the seventh trumpet is also the time when the judgment seat comes. And those who fear your name small and great, and should destroy those who destroy the earth. So this is also the time that the Lord will finally destroy. The the armies of the earth and the beasts and everything. Okay? So the seventh trumpet is actually a period of time. It doesn't happen, it's not like a short blast of the trumpet, and then everything happens together, it's a period of time. Because all these things have to happen, so like I mentioned. With the seventh trumpet, there was also the the um, the judgment seat. Which means that the people, the Christians who are remaining on earth, they have to be raptured. They have to be taken, so that is in, you can see this in Revelation, chapter fourteen. Chapter fourteen, verse sixteen. Okay, starting from verse fourteen, fourteen fourteen. Okay, then I looked and behold a white cloud, and on the cloud sat one like the son of man, having on his head a golden crown, and in his hand a sharp sickle. And another angel came out of the temple crying with a loud voice to him who sat on the cloud. Thrust in your sickle and reap, for the time has come for you to reap of the harvest of the earth, for the harvest of the earth is ripe. So he sat on the cloud, thrust in his sickle on the earth, and the earth was reaped. So this is the, the Christians who are remaining. They are most, the time is right, so it's the time of to harvest them. So they're taken up. So at the seventh trumpet, the Lord descends to the cloud. In the air, he's in the air still. The, the dead overcomers will come with him to the, in the cloud. The, the ones who are alive will be taken up to the cloud at the judgment seat, and the ones who are dead will also be taken there as well. So the Lord will use this time to judge the living and the dead Christians in the air, okay? He has not yet come down to the earth yet. That's later, so for now, he has still come down from heaven to the air in the clouds to judge the living and the dead Christians, okay? So we have that, and then. After, at the same time. Of the blowing of the uh seventh trumpet, it also sets off the seven bowls. So in chapter sixteen, you can see that. It says here, I heard a loud voice from the temple saying to the seven angels. Go and pour out the bowls of the wrath of God on earth. So this is the third woe. So the third woe is the third is are the seven bowls, so what happens, let's take a look at what happens in each of the bowls. So the first bowl, two. It says, the first went and poured out his bowl upon the earth, and a foul and loathsome sore came upon men who had the mark of the beast and those who worshipped his. So all the people of the earth, they were gonna have. First, they had the locusts, then they had the two hundred million horsemen, now they have loathsome sores, terrible sores. If you've ever had a sore in your mouth, it really hurts, now imagine this all over your body, I'm sure, very, very nice. And then the second bowl, the second angel poured out his bowl on the sea, and it became blood as of a dead man, and every living creature in the sea died. Then the third angel poured out his bowl on the rivers and springs of water, and it became blood. And we're gonna skip down, and then the eighth, uh verse eight, the fourth bowl, then the fourth angel poured out his bowl on the sun. His power was given to him to scorch men with fire, and men were scorched with great heat, and they blasphemed the name of God, who has power over these places, and they did not repent and give him glory. That's the fourth, and the fifth one, verse ten. The fifth angel poured out his bowl on the throne of the beast. And his kingdom became full of darkness, and they gnawed their tongues because of the pain. They blasphemed the God of heaven because of their pain and their sores, and did not repent of their deeds. He still will repent. And then the sixth bowl. Then the sixth angel poured out his bowl on the great river Euphrates, and its water was dried up so that the way of the kings from the east might be prepared. And I saw three unclean spirits like frogs coming out of the mouth of the dragon, and out of the mouth of the beast, and out of the mouth of the false prophet. For they are spirits of demons performing signs which go out to the kings of the earth, and that the whole world should gather them to the battle of that great day of God Almighty. So here, you can see, the sixth bowl. Here, the world armies are gathering at Armageddon. Then I found a picture of Armageddon. In case you're wondering, it is a real place, I'll show you what it looks like. Here we go. Okay. Of course, now I wanna show you in a different way. Let's try this. Always bad news, right?
又回到了这张图片
Okay, so. That is a picture of Megiddo. It's a big flat, there's a hill here, and then there's the old city of Megiddo. And then this big plain here. And this is what, this is the area, this is where Armageddon. That great war where the armies of the world will gather. This is in the land, in Israel, and the whole, all the armies of the world will gather here to meet the Lord. To try to fight against him and the saints. So it is a real place. And so it says here, they will, in verse sixteen. Okay, they they uh, they go out to the kings of the earth, verse fourteen, to the whole world and gather them to the. The battle of the great day of God Almighty. Behold, I am coming as a thief, blessed is he who watches and keeps his garments, thus he walked naked, and they see his shaven. And they gathered them together to a place in Hebrew called Armageddon, or Megiddo, which is this place here. There's a lot of space, so one day, this place will be filled, okay? A lot of things are going to happen here. And then. The seventh bowl. Verse seventeen. Then the seventh angel. Poured out his bowl into the air, and a loud voice came out of the temple from heaven, from the throne, saying, it is done. And there were noises and thunderings and lightnings, and there was a great earthquake, such a mighty and great earthquake as had not occurred since men were on the earth. Now the great city Jerusalem was divided into three parts, and the cities of the nation fell. And great Babylon was remembered before God to give her the cup of the wine of the fierceness of his wrath. So the seventh bowl is when Babylon will be destroyed. So you remember, we read through Revelation seventeen and eighteen in this passage, how, how God judged the city of Babylon. It's not an actual city. But God completely destroyed it, and it said, in one hour, everything was destroyed. So this happens at the seventh bowl. And it says here, in every island fled away, and the mountains were not found, and great hail from heaven fell upon men. Each hailstone about the weight of a talent, men blasphemed God because of the plague of the hail, since the plague was exceedingly great. Okay, so. Then Revelation goes into chapter seventeen and eighteen, and we won't spend a lot of time into that. But this, this Babylon is also what the um. Is is Babylon this harlot in chapter seventeen, you see that she's sitting on top of this this beast. So uh, the beast with the seven heads. And this is, this shows that this, that Babylon is very much connected to the, to Satan and his kingdom, and the kingdom of the Antichrist. So Babylon is not just religion, but it includes the entire system of the world that uh that Satan is controlling. That's why it's destroyed here at the end. So, you know, if Babylon were destroyed earlier, then there's nothing for the beast to sit on, it has to be after the beast finishes his reign for it to be destroyed. And this, like I said, it includes not just religion, but the whole entertainment and and commerce and business, the economy, the political world, so many things of the world that we are touching today. It's all under this system of Babylon. Okay? And so that's chapter seventeen and eighteen, and we'll go through that because we've done that before. And then back to fourteen. We can see here, finally. In the, in my timeline here, we see. The seventh bowl is the judgment of Babylon. Chapter fourteen. We can see here. verse seventeen. This is, this describes the battle of Armageddon. It says, then another angel came out of the temple which is in heaven, he also having a sharp sickle. And another angel came out from the altar who had power over fire and he cried out with a loud voice, a loud cry to him who had the sharp sickle saying, okay, uh, thrust in your sharp sickle and gather the clusters of the vine of the earth, for her grapes are fully ripe. So the angel thrust his sickle into the earth and gathered the vine of the earth and threw it into the great winepress of the wrath of God. And the winepress was trampled outside the city and blood came out of the winepress up to the horses' bridles for one thousand six hundred furlongs. And that is a hundred and eighty-four miles long. So this, this is telling you that God will execute his wrath and his judgment on the armies of the earth at this time. And the blood, the city is outside Jerusalem. And the blood that is shed, the amount of blood that is shed is so deep that it's up to the horses' bridles and extends like a river out for a hundred and eighty-four miles. It's a lot of it's very bloody. Yeah, very bloody. Okay, because the whole armies of the earth are coming. Everybody is coming. And you can see here more, some more details over this in chapter nineteen. So after, after the seventh bowl, after Babylon is destroyed in chapter nineteen, you can see here. I heard a loud voice of a great multitude in heaven saying, Alleluia, salvation and glory and honor and power belongs to the Lord our God. For true and righteous are his judgments, because he has judged the great harlot, that's Babylon, who corrupted the earth with her fornication. And he has avenged on her the blood of his servants shed by her. Again, they say, Alleluia, her smoke rises up forever and ever. And the twenty-four elders and the four living creatures fell down and worshiped God who sat on the throne saying, amen, Alleluia. Then a voice came from the throne saying, praise our God, all you and servants and those who fear him, both small and great. And I heard as a word the voice of a great multitude as the sound of many waters and as the sound of mighty thunder and saying, Alleluia, for the Lord God of omnipotent reigns. So they're all praising the Lord because of the destruction of Babylon. That tells you, it's, they didn't praise the Lord for the destruction of other things, but they really praise the Lord over the destruction of Babylon because it is such an evil system. That has, it's deceived, even today it exists. We're in it today. It's just a really terrible thing. So they really praise the Lord for that. And then, um, continuing on here. So we were just talking about Armageddon, so if you continue in chapter nineteen. Of course, uh, I'll mention about the, the bride. Of course, one of the other things they're praising the Lord about is that the bride has made herself ready. And the marriage of the lamb has come and his wife has made herself ready. And to her it was granted to be arrayed in fine linen, clean and bright, for the fine linen is the righteous act of the saints. And he said to me, right, blessed are those who are called the marriage supper of the lamb. And so this is, you know, this is another reason to celebrate because the bride is ready and the marriage supper is coming. So this is happening right here. Right? So, uh, right at this point, the bride is ready. So that tells us that the marriage supper must be this part, the one thousand years. Because the, the, the wedding is about to happen, right? So the bride is ready. She's not the wife yet, but she's the bride right now, right? So she still has to be married. So the marriage is actually this part. The, the wedding feast of Christ, which is the one thousand years. So that's how we know it's, it's right there. And if you continue on in chapter nineteen, this is where Christ, he has, remember, he came down to the clouds. He has finished, by now he's finished judging, the judgment seat of Christ, rewarding the faithful Christians or, or punishing the unfaithful Christians. And then now with the, with the ones who are faithful, verse eleven, it says, I saw heaven open and behold a white horse. And he who sat on him was called faithful and true. And in righteousness he judges and makes war. His eyes were like a flame of fire and on his head were many crowns. And he had a name written that no one knew except himself. He was clothed with a robe dipped in blood and his name is called the word of God. And the armies in heaven clothed in fine linen, white and clean, followed him on white horse. So now we know that this is not, these are not angels. Because the angels do not have the white linen robes. It's the white, the linen is the righteous act of the saints. So these are the saints that have been made righteous. They're coming down with him. And so verse fifteen, it says, out of his mount goes a sharp sword that with it he should strike the nations. Remember, they've all gathered at Armageddon to fight him. And he's coming down with the sharp sword in his mouth and the armies of heaven, the saints. And he himself will rule them with a rod of fire. He himself treads the winepress of the fierceness and wrath of Almighty God. That's the winepress that was mentioned in chapter fourteen here. And that he has a name on his, on, and he has on his robe and on his thigh a name written, king of kings and lord of lords. So this is his second coming. Remember, his first coming, he came as a servant, as a baby. And he lived a poor life. He was a nobody and then he died like a criminal. But this time when he comes, it's very different. He's coming as the king of kings and lord of lords. He's not coming as a little baby anymore. He's coming to, to rule now. It's a very different, so that's why the, in chapter one of Revelation, it says, when they see him coming, they will mourn. They will be so regretful and sad because now they see, oh, this is the one that we crucified, this is the one that we hated. Now he is, you know, now he is coming as this king of kings and lord of lords. And then I saw an angel standing in the sun and he cried with a loud voice saying to all the birds that fly in the midst of heaven, come and gather together for the supper of the great one, to the supper. That you may eat the flesh of kings, the flesh of captains, the flesh of the mighty men, the flesh of horses and those who sit on them in the flesh of all the people, free and slaves, great and small and great. And I saw the beast, the kings of the earth, their armies gathered together to make war against him who sat on the horse and against his army. Then the beast was captured and with him the false prophet who worked signs on his presence, which he deceived those who received the mark of the beast and those who worshipped his image. Those who were cast alive into the lake of fire burning with bristle. So you see here, the lake of fire appears. They have, now the beast and the false prophet are thrown in. And it says in verse twenty-one, the rest were killed with the sword which proceeded in the mouth of him who sat on the horse. And all the birds were filled with their flesh. So you can see why it's so bloody, right? Not to scare you, but you know, sometimes we Christians are so, uh, I don't know. We don't, we like very calm, peaceful things, which is good, but we have to realize that the Lord wants to, the Lord is a man of war too. Right? And he, he is coming to fight, you know? It's actually coincides with another song. Psalm one ten. I don't know if any of you remember that, Psalm one ten. Is David's vision of that day. It's such a wonderful day that he wrote about it. David wrote about that day. Psalm one ten. It says, the Lord said to my lord, sit at my right hand till I make your enemies your footstool. The Lord shall send the rod of your strength out of Zion. Rule in the midst of your enemies. Your people shall be volunteers in the day of your power. In the beauties of holiness from the womb of the morning, you have the dew of your youth. The Lord has sworn and will not relent. You are priests forever according to the order of Montesada. The Lord is at your right hand. He shall execute kings in the day of his wrath. He shall judge among the nations. He shall fill the places with dead bodies. He shall execute the heads of many countrymen. He shall drink the broken blood by the wayside. Therefore he shall lift up the heads. This obviously had never happened yet. He has not come to execute kings yet. So this is David's vision in his prophecy. He saw too that one day the Lord will come. Even the heads of the nations, they will be executed by the Lord. You know, that's why some people, they like to protest against the government, they wanna protest and it's not gonna do anything. This is the solution. The Lord is the, the only solution to fixing the problems in the governments and the world and all that. It's for the Lord to come back. He is the one that will bring in righteousness. You know, sometimes you, you look at the, the news and you think, oh, you know, so-and-so world leader, whether it's Trudeau or Biden or somebody, they did so many crimes. They have so many crimes, but yet they don't go to jail. You know, nothing happens to them. You know, they can do so many things. If I go, if I just do something wrong, they can put me in jail, but these people, they do so many very terrible crimes, even killing people. Yet somehow they don't go to jail. So there's no righteousness in this world, no justice. So one day, the solution is that the Lord has to come back to judge. Right? He will, he will carry it out. Um, yes, and also Zechariah fourteen, we won't read that. You can read that when we have time. So the destruction of the beast armies at Christ's return, so all of them, they'll be thrown into the lake of fire. Okay, yeah, and then that's chapter nineteen. Where is my diagram? Okay? And of course, we see in chapter nineteen. So here we can see, Christ has returned. The armies of the beast have been destroyed. And what happened after that, in chapter twenty. It says, I saw an angel coming down from heaven having the key to the bottomless pit and a great chain in his hand and he laid hold of the dragon. That serpent of old who is the devil. So what is the dragon? Is the devil, Satan. So, yes, dragon is no good, okay? So I know in some cultures dragon is good luck, but not, not in the Bible, the dragon is a bad thing, okay? It's the devil. He took the dragon, which is Satan. I, I wonder, why is it when they drew, when they draw a picture of a dragon, they knew it looks like a serpent? You know? They never, many cultures, they never read the Bible before, but they knew when they draw a dragon, that it looks like a serpent. How did they know? But it is, it is the serpent. And they, it bound Satan for a thousand years. And he cast him into the bottomless pit and shut him up and set a seal on him so that he should deceive the nations no more till the thousand years were finished. After these things, he must be released for a little while. And then you see here, finally the thrones. They sat on them, judgment was committed to them. And I saw the souls of those who have been beheaded for their witness to Jesus and for the word of God, who have not worshipped the beast. So this is only referring to the people who went through the reign of the Antichrist, the great day of God's wrath. Then you can see what it takes to be able to sit on the throne. For those people, if you wanna sit on the throne, you have to be beheaded. It doesn't say here, uh, anything else, starved to death or died of a disease, it says beheaded. Why? Because because it means you have to give up your life, your martyrs. Right? So they did not worship the beast or his image and had not received his mark on their foreheads or on their hands. And they lived in reign with Christ for a thousand years. So this is only referring to, uh, those people. But also we know that the other believers, the ones who had, the overcomers in the first fruits, they will also be there. Because they were part of the, the bride that goes into the marriage feast, okay? And, but the rest of the dead did not live again in this time, until the thousand years were finished. This is the first resurrection. So only the, only the believing, only the Christians who are dead will be resurrected at this time. The others, the non-believing dead will not be resurrected yet. So they will still be dead. So blessed and holy is he who has part in the first resurrection, over such the second death has no power, but they shall be priests of God and of Christ and shall reign with him for a thousand years. So that's a wonderful reward. That is the, the reward that the Lord wants to give to us, to have the crown. So here you can see the thousand years, reigning with Christ. The wedding feast, Satan is chained up. And you have to remember, this is an actual, a literal one thousand years. Some people, they like to say, oh, uh, first, the second Peter says a day is like a thousand years and a thousand years is like a day, so this is a day. No, it's not. It is actually a thousand years. And that verse in second Peter, you can't use it everywhere. You can't use it all the time. If it's a thousand years, it's a day, it's a day, it's a thousand years. That's not what it means. There's a specific context for that. But here, imagine you were reigning with Christ. Do you want it to be one day? I don't think you would be happy if it was one day. Oh, today you're on the throne, tomorrow it's finished. If you were in the, if you didn't make it and you are in the outer darkness, yeah, you would wish it was one day, but it's not, okay? But if you're here, you want it to be a thousand years. And you have to remember also, this is, there will be, it's not here because this is only a diagram for Revelation. But in Matthew twenty-five, it also speaks about at the judgment seat. Uh, over there we have, up here we have the judgment seat of Christ. Right? That, also the, the people who, uh, went through, the non-believers, those who were, uh, who helped the Christians. Right? Because in chapter twenty-five of Matthew says, when I was naked, you clothed me. When I was hungry, you fed me. When I was in prison, you visited me. So that's referring to the non-believers that were actually did good works towards the Christians. And those people at the judgment seat, they will, the Lord calls them the sheep. The others were called the goats and they, they, they had to go into the lake of fire, right? They could not go in. But the ones that were faithful or good and even accepted the everlasting gospel, remember in chapter, uh, uh, which chapter was it? The everlasting gospel. Uh, chapter fourteen. Right? Chapter fourteen, the angel preached the everlasting gospel. They received it. They were good to the Christians. They're allowed to continue into the millennial kingdom. But remember, those people are, have not, do not have the regenerated bodies. So when we, when we as Christians die and we're resurrected, first Corinthians fifteen, it says, you will be given a new body. So we will have a new body that doesn't get old, it doesn't get sick and it lives forever. Just like Jesus, when he resurrected from the dead, out of the grave, his body was different from how it was before. You remember when the disciples first saw him after he resurrected, they said they didn't even recognize him. Mary, Mary was so Mary, Mary was so close to him, but when she saw him, she thought what? It's the gardener, she thought it was the gardener, so they didn't, they didn't recognize him. And then he could, what? He could, one moment he was in the room with them breaking bread, and then the next moment he disappeared. And then he could reappear and disappear. So definitely that body was different, right? It was, it was different. So when we are resurrected, we will also have a perfected body like Christ. Right? So that means we will also, that's how you're able to live for a thousand years. Right? So, you know, normally, you know, we can't live very long, right? So, but the people of the world that are not Christians, but they're allowed to continue into the millennial kingdom, they're still in the old body. So they will still die, they will still give birth and have new generations. There will be many generations that grow throughout this. Right? So, you know, when, when it says that the, the saints are ruling over the nations for a thousand years, that means there's people to rule over. It's not only believers, that means there's some, there are still people in the world that you will be ruling over. And that, these are the people that went through this. They were allowed to continue on into the millennial kingdom. Okay? So, but after this, after the thousand years, verse seven, chapter twenty, it says, when the thousand years have expired, Satan will be released from his prison and will go out to deceive the nations, which are in the four corners of the earth, Gog and Magog, to gather them together to battle whose number is as the sand of the sea. So all these people, now, by the end of a thousand years, those people have long forgotten what happened here. They have long forgotten what God had done and what their ancestors had done to help the Christians, all that. They have now, they're completely different people, many generations later. And Satan will come out and start to deceive them. And will gather many of them up to make another battle, to try to fight against God, at Gog and Magog. Okay? We don't know what Gog and Magog is, if it's a place, what is it, we don't know, it doesn't say. Okay? And then it says, but this time, fire came down, uh, the, okay, verse nine, they went up on the breadth of the earth and surrounded the camp of the saints and the beloved city. And fire came down from God out of heaven and devoured them, so that was very easy, you just going to blast the fire into God, right? And the devil who deceived them was cast into the lake of fire and brimstone, where the beast and the false prophet are, and they will be tormented day and night forever. That's the end of Satan. So praise the Lord for that, no more Satan. Okay? And then, after that, now is the great white throne judgment. So this is where it says that, verse twelve, small and great, the dead, small and great, were all standing before God. And the books were opened, and another book was opened, which is the book of life. And the dead were judged according to their works by the things which were written in the books. Okay? And the sea gave up the dead who were in the, and death in Hades delivered up the dead who were in the, and they were judged each one according to his works. Then death in Hades were cast into the lake of fire, this is the second death. And anyone not found written in the book of life was cast into the lake of fire. So this is the final end for people who are not, who do not receive the salvation of Christ. And also those, um, yeah, so it is a very, anyone who rejected the gospel. It's a very serious punishment. It's forever. Once you, someone dies, remember, these people, maybe they lived today and then they died, they don't resurrect until here. So all through this time, they will be, remain dead, and then at the great white throne, all the dead, the remaining unbelieving dead will come up. And they will go into the lake of fire. To be burning for forever. It's a very terrible judgment. It's very terrible. So this is why, when we see people, we really have to believe that, you know, it's not just choosing a religion, but it's really to save their life. You know, because this is a very terrible punishment. But you, you realize, you remember, God gave people so many chances to repent, many chances. Even during the last three and a half years, he gave chances. So they still, many of them still don't want to repent. And then finally, we see in chapter twenty-one, this one, we know, we like to read this, the new heaven and new earth. So the first heaven and the first earth had passed away, there was no more sea. And the holy city New Jerusalem came down out of heaven from God, prepared as a bride for her husband. And now finally, God has achieved his soul. And it says, behold, the tabernacle of God is with men. He's not living in heaven anymore, now he's living on the earth with us. And he shall dwell with them, and they shall be his people, God himself will be with them and be their God. And God will wipe away every tear from their eyes, there shall be no more death, nor sorrow, nor crying, there shall be no more pain, for the former things have passed away. Then he, who sat on the throne, said, behold, I make all things new. And he said to me, write for these words are true and useful. Okay, and then, verse seven, it says, wait, verse six, it says, he said to me, it is done, I am the Alpha and the Omega, the beginning and the end. I will give of the fountain of the water of mine freely to him who thirsts. He who overcomes shall inherit all things, and I will be his God, and he shall be his son. So it's no longer just he who, it doesn't say he who believes, but it says he who overcomes will inherit all things. So it's not enough just to believe, but we have to overcome. But the cowardly, unbelieving, abominable murderers, sexually immoral sorcerers, idolaters and all liars shall have their parts in the lake which burns with fire and brimstone, which is the second death. They will, they will be there forever, all these people. Then one of the seven angels, who had the seven bowls filled with the seven last plagues, came to me and talked to me, saying, come, I will show you the bride, the lamb's wife. So you see now, it's not just the, the bride with her wedding dress, but now it is the lamb's wife. And he showed me, carried me away in the spirit to show you a great high mountain and show me the great city, the holy Jerusalem, descending out of heaven from God. You know, the descriptions and the measurements of the, of the new Jerusalem. Right? So this is, there is, um, in chapter twenty-two, you can see, there's a pure river of water of life here, as Christ spoke proceeding from the throne of God and of the Lamb. In the middle of its stream and on either side of the river was a tree of life with four tall fruits. Each tree yielding its fruit every month, and the leaves of the tree were for the healing of the nation's people. So there will still be nations left on the earth. So those are probably the people who did not have a chance to hear the gospel, they, they were judged by their works. Uh, and that's why there were books at the great white throne to, to judge them based on how they lived their life. And those ones who were, the Lord judged to be righteous by their works, were allowed to continue on into the new heaven and new earth. And there is, that's why it's necessary to have the tree of life, the leaves to heal them. Right, because of all the, the deception of Satan and all that he had done. And now there is no more curse, but the throne of God and the lamb shall be in it, and his servants shall serve him. And they shall see his face and his name shall be on their foreheads. And there shall be no night there, they need no lamp nor light of the sun for the Lord God gives them light, and they shall reign forever on heaven. So we see here that now, the faithful ones, we Christians, we can reign with the Lord forever and ever. And that is what the Lord is trying to accomplish. But you can see here, how, you know, and this really needs to be our goal, this is what we want to see. And this is why we, you know, the word says that if you are a friend of the world, you make yourself an enemy of God. And now after reading this, I hope you understand, because it's such an evil thing. Even the things that look good in the world are Satan's behind it, and everything is destroyed. Nothing is left, everything is gone. So that's why we really have to be careful not to get trapped in those things. So that's why he, yeah, so he continues in, um, to warn us that he is coming quickly. So these things we should, um, always keep in our mind to remember, the righteousness and the holiness of God. You know, God is, God is indeed a consuming fire. And he will judge the earth. But if we don't keep remembering these things of what he'll do, it's very easy to forget how holy the Lord is. And then our fear of the Lord goes away. You know, there is really a need to fear the Lord and fear even to be afraid of what he can do. Because what he can do to the earth is really, it is scary. Those people who turn away from him. You know, so we, yeah, but thank the Lord that he's given us the mercy that we can do. He's given us the way to reign with him. Oh, I think there was another picture, I wanted to see. It was on this one. That's Ezekiel. Oh, yeah, this is the Mount of Olives, right? So this is in Jeru, outside of Jerusalem. And Zechariah, the book of Zechariah says, when the Lord returns, he will descend, his feet will set on the Mount of Olives. So people will see him coming down, and he will set his feet on the Mount of Olives. You see all these? These, you know what those are? Those are all tombstones. Because the Jews, they also believe, well, Zechariah is in the Old Testament, they believe that. And to them, they don't think it's Jesus, they think it's their Messiah. They, they also know that when the Messiah comes, the Messiah will come down on the Mount of Olives. And they believe that all the dead will be raised. So that's why many of them, they, they bury themselves, they, they bury their dead on the Mount of Olives, hoping that when the Messiah comes, they'll, it'll resurrect them and it'll be a blessed resurrection or something. Yeah, but it is true, when the Lord returns, he will come down on, on this. Praise the Lord.
I have a question.
Yeah.
On the chart that you showed, like the, the, after the last three and a half years, that short period, so is it only the nations and the unbelievers who are there? Is the Christians?
One second, let me, let me just pull that up again. Wh- which one again?
That seven bowls thing, right? Because you have the general harvest there on top.
Yeah.
So my understanding of general harvest are all the Christians, right?
Yeah.
So whoever is gonna undergo the seven bowls, it can be the nations and the unbelievers.
Yes, yes, well, then, yeah, the nations, right. Everybody who's left behind, because there's nobody else left, like the Christians are all gone already by that time. First Corinthians says that the, that, uh, that, uh, when the trumpet sounds, at the sound of the trumpet, then you will, they will be taken up. So if that general harvest happens immediately at the sound. But like I said, it's probably a very short time, you know, um. It won't be, it could be just a few days, because even the judgment of Babylon, it's only one hour long. You know, and we know that the, um, according to Daniel nine twenty-four, that everything is supposed to end at the end of the seventyth week. So that means this period after the Antichrist is probably very short, it's probably not exactly, uh, seventy weeks to the day, but it's probably a bit of a period, uh, after that, to carry out all these things. So the time of the seven, seven bowls could be actually very short. Then I don't know how the Lord will judge so many Christians. Go through your entire life, everything you did, everything you said, for each person at the judgment seat in that period. So somehow, I don't know how he does it, but he's going to do it in that time.
How, how come it's not chronological order of the Bible?
I don't know, ask the Lord.
Now you have so, now you have amazing sources like these, you don't have to decipher it.
Well, you should still read the Bible yourself. This is just, this is just a introduction, it's just a help, but we should all take everything back to read the word, uh, and see it for ourselves. And also, what, what I presented here, I'm sure it's not, it's not a hundred percent, I don't claim that to be a hundred percent accurate. There's still many things that the Lord is still showing us. So maybe while you're reading, you'll find out the world will show you some. Yeah, praise the Lord. I remember, just, on a lighter note, when I was in Mount of Olives, there was no space. All the rich men have bought all the place. So, at least it makes me to believe that some people who were there actually believe that the Lord is coming. Whether it's the first time for the Jews, or it's coming the second time for the believers, so at least, at least the Bible is correct.
Is the outer darkness also in the thousand years?
Yes. The outer darkness is during the thousand years. Yeah, because that goes back to Matthew twenty-five. Where you can see Matthew twenty-five, for example, the, the parable of the talents. So this is talking about how, let's say in, um, verse seventeen, the kingdom of heaven is like a man traveling to a far country, who called his own servants and delivered his goods to them. So the man traveling to a far country is the Lord, he went away for a long time. But then, one day he will come and, uh, it says here, after, verse nineteen, after a long time, the lawyer of those servants came and settled accounts with them. So that means he's going to come back and judge them, that's the judgment seat. And then, you know what happens, right, to the five, it says to the one who had five, uh, verse twenty-one, I will make you ruler over many things. So that's him, having, you know, he, he's qualified, he received the crown, now he can rule with Christ for a thousand years, that's why he says, you will, I will make you a ruler. So that's referring to the thousand years that he can rule in the kingdom. But then to the unfaithful one, verse twenty-four, uh, no, verse twenty-six, the Lord answered and said to him, you wicked and lazy servant, you knew that I reap where I have not sown and scattered, gather where I have not gathered seed. So you ought to have deposited my money with the bankers, not my coming, I would have received back my own with interest. Therefore, take the talent from him and give it to him as ten talents. Uh, here, to everyone who has more will be given, and he will have abundance, but from him who does not have, even what he has will be taken away. And cast the unprofitable servant into the outer darkness. So you can see that this is the period immediate, it's following after the judgment seat. So some get to go into the thousand years to become So some get to go into the thousand years to become rulers, and some go into the thousand years into outer darkness, where there's weeping and gnashing of teeth. And these are Christians. So because they are, how do we know they're Christians? Because they called the Lord master. Non-Christian would not call him master. And the Lord gave them talents, which is a measure of the spirit that they have to use to serve, to serve him, right? Um, and to, in the church. So you know, non-Christian wouldn't have that. So that, that again confirms that Christians will be judged on what they do. And then where they go from there. Yeah, just to add to that, in Matthew, chapter eight, if you look at verse twelve, Matthew, chapter eight, in verse twelve, it calls them the sons of the kingdom. But the sons of the kingdom will be cast out into the outer darkness. They will be weeping and gnashing of teeth. Sunder the kingdom should not be there. And also in First Corinthians three, where it says that everything that you build, whether it's gold, silver, precious stones, wood, hay, straw, will be tested by fire. And then, if it doesn't pass, that's again, the judgment seat. It'll be tested. And then everything that doesn't pass, if you don't pass, it says, the works will be burnt, you will suffer loss. And he himself will be saved by through fire. So that means that this thousand year period will be fiery, it will be, um, you know, it'll be very painful. And that goes along with Revelation, I think to one of the seven churches, it says, uh, you will not be hurt by the second death. That means you can be hurt. The second death is the lake of fire. So it's possible that during a thousand years, you could be, you won't go into the lake of fire, but you'll be hurt by it somehow. So a lot of warnings, that we could be definitely hurt in some way. Matthew twenty-four also, it says, there's so many. You know, the servant, when the Lord finds, comes, finds him not serving, and instead even beating the fellow servants, this person will be cast into outer darkness. So when the Lord comes, when he comes to judge us, will we be such a busy servant? Actually, most of the warnings about outer darkness in the Bible were pointed to Christians. Yeah.